Good evening. Welcome to the Milford School Committee meeting for Thursday, October ninth, two thousand and fourteen. This meeting is being recorded. We do have members of the media present, both newspaper as well as Milford TV present. For any broadcast of this, anybody would like a broadcast or a copy of this meeting, please feel free to reach out to myself or any members of the school committee. Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get ourselves started off with the approval of minutes. Everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from our most recent meeting. If we can get a motion from Patrick, second from Joe, all in favor, okay? It'll be one abstention as I was not in attendance at that meeting. So we'll have six in favor, one abstention. Next item on the agenda is invitation to speak. Is anyone here for invitation to speak? Seeing no one, we will move on to the next agenda item. Up next, we have announcements and correspondence. Does any member have any announcements or correspondence? Patrick?
I do have an announcement. I had an opportunity last week to attend our K through two recess evaluation with, I didn't have an opportunity to attend the parent's session, but I did have an opportunity to attend the teacher's session. I want to thank the teachers for coming out and sharing their opinions. I thought it was a thoughtful discussion. It was very professional. I think that they made, they made their case very well. It was good dialogue, and I would just like to thank everyone that did come and did attend. I thought it was a very productive session for us.
I today had the opportunity to be here at the high school. The National Honor Society welcomed five new members, and I just wanted to thank Kerry for running a really nice event for the parents as well as the students that were inducted.
Any other members?
Yes.
I was gonna say, I actually did have something as well. So I had an opportunity to attend the parent forum, which I realized was just past the teacher forum. Unfortunately, I was not able to get to the teacher forum. And again, wanted to, you know, certainly thank Kevin for, for running the meeting, and also I know there were many other members in attendance, but wanted to thank the parents for coming out. You know, certainly a lot of passion around this, around this issue. It was great to see the parent participation, some great questions and some great issues that were brought up. I did want to just make the committee aware, I did receive an email that the parent actually asked that I bring in and just go over with the committee. It was actually a parent that was in attendance at this. I know she did mention that she's been in touch with Dr. McIntyre as well as the teachers, but did want to just let you guys know what the, what the parent had said. Parents email just said, you know, I give you permission to mention my name as well as my children's name and the correspondence from Milford School Committee purposes. You have my permission to use both names. The parent's name is Audra, and the last name is L-I-Z-A-R-R-A-L-D-E, Lazardi. And she also included some emails that she's gone back and forth with Dr. McIntyre on. What she specifically said was that she's speaking, she's spoken with Dr. McIntyre as well as with her and her husband. We've gone back and forth with emails between her and Lisa Burns. She feels as though, in her opinion, that the student, that the ownership is not being taken for the policies and procedures that's being asked the staff to implement, specifically as it relates to, she is a child who is being removed from lunch recess one day a week to receive special education services. I know part of the conversation that I had with her as well was with regards to some concerns she expressed at the parent forum as it relates to some of the things that were brought up, as far as the reason for the adjustment with the recess was to be able to provide services for special education. The parent had brought up at the forum that she felt as though this was, this was something that was really attacking, was her words, the inclusion model. These were her words, not mine, just to be, just to be fair. I did speak with her today. She did, she did mention and included the emails that she's been going back and forth with you. I know you guys are in the process of working through this. The parent specifically asked that I read the email during, during, during the meeting this evening, so I did want to make you guys aware of this. But it was more, her biggest concern was that her student, in addition to obviously the changes in some of the recesses, she is a kindergarten parent, just for information. In addition to the recess changes, as well as the nap time and rest change, and rest time changes, this student, as well as, as well as others, are being removed from lunch recess as well, one, at least one day a week to receive speech services. So, something that she wanted to make sure that I brought to the committee's attention. I know that Dr. McIntyre, you're already working with her. I know Lisa Burns is as well, but I want to make sure that I brought this to the attention of the committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It may be useful, Dr. McIntyre, if you don't mind giving an update, since the last time the committee met, we had parents here express some concerns. Since then, we've had two forum events, one-
Correct.
-as Mr. Hall mentioned, for faculty, and then a second one for families. We want to, you know, echo those comments to thank the families and staff for coming out and expressing those concerns. It did not fall on deaf ears. We've had some, obviously some follow-up meetings to that. That said, perhaps you might just make a couple of comments-
Sure, sure.
... for the committee and the public about where we are.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was, I was really impressed by the turnout, just to, again, echo what the committee members have said and Dr. Tremblay. This past week, we've, I've met with the two elementary principals. We reviewed the parent and teacher feedback, which is very important. We looked closely at the kindergarten schedules. We received a clarification from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding the kindergarten time on learning requirements and how they differ from one through four, and how they differ even when you go into the secondary level. And our plan is to communicate to parents probably by the end of next week. We're gonna, we're gonna follow, I'm gonna follow up with a meeting with Ms. Burns and Ms. Firth, probably either Monday or Tuesday, and we'll be sending a communication out to everybody by the end of the week.
Certainly, as we saw during that parent forum, thank you for the quick update.
Absolutely.
Certainly, as we saw with the parents, as well as, as we've heard from the teachers as well, a lot of passion, a lot of energy around this particular issue. I think, you know, one of the things, if I may, just for a moment, I think one of the things that's certainly driving a lot of that is, as we've discussed, as you guys have discussed as well, is A, it was the communication, the way that it was driven out, and B, I think some of the execution that's gone out, and, and the way that, I think the intent was good. I think the execution has been challenging. So I know that that's something that you're working towards and working to continue to correct. It's certainly something that having a five-year-old get off the bus and, you know, I was thinking about this and putting my, even putting myself in that. If I got, if I got into work at seven, seven-thirty, quarter of eight in the morning, in my first coffee break where I was able to get out of my office, in some cases with no windows, wasn't until twelve-thirty in the afternoon, I'd probably be a little cranky in the afternoon when I got home, too. So, if there's anything we can do, I know one of the things that you're gonna be looking at is, is there a way to be able to exercise outdoor, outdoor education and allowing the students to either be outside at some point during the day, have a teacher conduct part of their class outside, and giving them that freedom to be able to still get outside, get some fresh air, get some exercise, and engage in some social activities. I think that would go a long way towards continuing to allow the, allow the students to get some exercise, get some freedom, as well as, you know, get that much-needed break as part of that fifteen-minute break that we already got built in. So, I know that you're actively working on that and look forward to seeing an update. Any other announcements or correspondence?
Yeah, I wanted to share with the committee, last Friday, you may recall that Milford schools are part of the Blackstone Valley Education Foundation, and I wanted to just give an update. There, under the leadership of Matt Bayon, our guidance director, Mitch Johnson, Rich Johnson's an engineering teacher at the high school, on Friday, October third, two dozen Milford High School students participated in a large career awareness program. Blackstone Valley Education Foundation coordinated a local Massachusetts Manufacturing Day initiative, and John Fernandez was a big leader in that effort for us. This is a cooperation between the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce, Manufacturing Extension Partnership, and the National Park Service. And I want to just comment and thank the students that attended and represented Milford so well, and the staff who led them there. So it's just great to be part of this. Again, it goes back to our, you know, this is an initiative of getting hands-on learning for kids who may be interested in pursuing something in manufacturing that's outside of, you know, college and career readiness. So, wanted to just acknowledge that, and that we had two dozen students attend-
Wow.
-and made Milford proud as they do.
Okay. Okay. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is introduction of our newest principal and administrator. So, Mr. Hughes, if you'd come on right on up to our table here. So certainly want to introduce, if you can just introduce yourself, you're the Middle School East interim principal, so I'll let you kind of welcome. Thanks for, thanks for coming to Milford. We've heard great things. It was nice to meet you on the first day of school, but I'll let you introduce yourself to the community as well as the committee.
Great. Well, thank you very much for having me in your district. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm excited by it, and I'm enjoying it. I think it's going well. Very happy with the faculty and students at East. It's, it's been a really fast two months since I've joined the district, and it's been reaffirming, kind of closing a circle in many ways. There are a couple of, so far I've met a handful of kids whose parents I had as students when I was teaching back early in my career. And I've also found a faculty member whose husband was a former student of mine, so kind of a small world. I've always had a great deal of respect for Milford, both academically and athletically as an administrator, and back in the day when I was coaching and officiating. Number of my friends have, have lived here and continue to live here, and it's a great opportunity to stay in education and hopefully be of service to you folks. So, I appreciate the opportunity and thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to, John, just give the committee a little sense of, although I did provide this back when you were appointed in the interim role, and of course, John was, is, he's done an excellent job and has an excellent track record, and just the right kind of fit for us with the two-year and, you know, the interim nature of the job and helping to transition what will be a big transition for us come with the time Woodland Schools opening its doors and moving eighth grade into Stacy Middle School, moving grade five to Woodland School. And so for all those reasons, John was the best fit for us. But maybe just tell the committee and the community, who may not have the benefit of knowing a little bit about your background, you know, some of the work that you've done prior to coming to Milford.
Sure. Well, Natick, Natick guy, went to Natick High School. When I graduated, I went to Boston College. I got my master's degree there as well as my bachelor's. And when I graduated, I went right into teaching and wound up having several offers and took my hometown and started teaching in Natick at the junior high level, Wilson Junior High, grade seven through nine. And I taught there for fourteen years, was transferred to the high school, taught social studies there. I was basketball and baseball assistant coach for fourteen years. And then in nineteen eighty-five, I had the opportunity to go to Kennedy Middle School, where I was vice principal for nine years. And that was a very interesting time, because the model changed from a seven through nine junior high school. The high school enrollment got smaller, the ninth grade went to the high school, so for one year, we were grade seven and eight. Then we picked up the sixth grade, and then a couple of years later, we picked up the fifth. So, we became a five through eight middle school for a number of years. And I then became principal of that school when Bill Donovan retired. I was named principal and was principal at Kennedy Middle School for eight years. And then had the good fortune of being moved to Natick High School, where I finished my career in Natick forty years, fastest forty years you could imagine. The last eight years, I was principal at Natick High School. And I really tried to retire.
How's that working for you?
I had a knee replacement. I sat out for a year, and I found out that I'm a type A person, and I couldn't stand it. And I was actually, went back subbing at the Wilson Middle School down the street, friendly with the principal there, and substituted for a couple of months, and had the opportunity to go to Hamilton-Wentham Regional High School as interim principal, and experienced the world of being in interim, landing in the community that you really had no familiarity with. The people were fabulous, the kids were great, it was a great opportunity. They had an interesting set of circumstances, and I wound up being asked to come back for a second year, where I served second year as principal at Hamilton-Wentham Regional High School. And then tried to retire again, and that was two summers ago. And on the first day of school last year, I got a call from the superintendent. My friend, who was the middle school principal, had become ill. And I started, they asked me if I would come back and take the middle school, because I was still certified as a middle school principal, and I did. And it started out on a month-to-month basis, but by around Thanksgiving time, it was clear that I was gonna be there for the year. My friend's doing well, I'm happy to say. But I was there last year, and then I was retired, and I came home one day from playing golf, and my wife said, "You gotta listen to the message." And I listened to the message, and a friend of mine who lives in town said, in Milford, said, "Well, there's an opening. I sent your name in. If you, if you get a call..." And so, I didn't think too much of it. And then a few days later, I got a call from Dr. Tremblay's office, and, "Would you come over and have a cup of coffee?" And next thing you know, here I am, and I, I thank you for the opportunity. But it is, it's been good in the sense that I've had the opportunity to be in interim in the past, and I do have middle school experience. And actually, the majority of my years have included eighth graders. So, it's a unique age. They've got a lot of energy. I try to keep up with them. They're finding out that the old guy can still move, and so they're a good crew. I was very, very proud of them yesterday. We had the Blackstone Valley Tech presentation, and several of the faculty told me that it was the best-behaved group we've had for, for the visitors in, in a number of years. So, they did themselves proud. So, very pleased with that, and looking forward to a great year with them.
That's great.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, and welcome to Milford.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming in, and we've heard, certainly heard some great stuff and some great things about your, your time in already, so.
I'll try to live up to it. We'll see, we'll see how it goes.
You're like the Don Zimmer of education.
You know, I've been called a lot of things, but never that. That's not bad. I like that.
I was gonna, I was gonna say Brett Favre, so.
Okay, too. I'll take it.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent cycle, end-of-cycle evaluation. Everyone has in their Dropbox both a copy of their individual evaluation, as well as what I put together from a summary. I want to just kind of walk through, walk through for the benefit of the viewing public, as well as for the committee members and the media that's present, how I put the summary together, and kind of what this, how this presentation, what this process will look like as we're going through this, this evening. Couple of things, I did receive the end-of-cycle summary from the group. Thank you, guys. I, I saw a lot of the comments that were in there. Some of you, I, I'm gonna have to see if you guys have, do English tutoring for when my daughter's applying for college, because some of you guys wrote some very lengthy responses, which is fantastic. I will tell you, trying to put it all together and summarize, it did not make it an easy task, but it was, it was great to see all the feedback and the passion that you guys put into it, and clearly the effort. As far as the process, as I was putting together the, the summary, what I went through and my philosophy as I went through it was this. I put, I basically took each section as if we were voting on it as a group. So I took your individual responses, I took all of our individual responses, and majority ruled. So, it was nice to see that in many cases, we were in pretty well in alignment, which tells me that we're all communicating well and actually thinking along the same lines, which is always good to see a committee that's pretty well in sync. You will notice that in the summary, there are no comments that were put in there, and I will be very candid with the reason why those comments were not put in there. Some, some of your, of your summaries and your evaluations were put into bullet form in your comments, which would have been very easy to extract without taking things out of context. However, some were written in paragraph form. As a result, if I were to extract just individual lines from it, I felt as though it'd be taking, we run the risk of taking things out of context, and I run the risk, and we run the risk at that point of either things being misinterpreted or skewed. I could have just put everybody's comment in, but this evaluation would have been about seventy-five pages long if I'd have done that, so I chose not to do that. Instead, what I'd like to do as part of this format is I'm gonna go through each individual section. At the end of each section, if there's something that you have in your notes that you would like to pull out of context and add in from your own individual notes, and add in a couple, a couple of pieces of color that you'd like to add in. Dr. Tremblay has copies of everybody, so it's not that he won't have them, but if you feel that it's important that you bring something up that you, that you've written down in your evaluation, at the end of each section, we'll pause and we'll turn to the group to read any comments or any comments that you've written down. Any questions or concerns about the way that we're gonna kind of go through this? No? Okay. Perfect. So, go to page one of the, we'll go to just page one of the summary. Page one of the summary is we look through. So step one is assess progress towards goals. We were all in, in pretty well in alignment on this one. So professional practice goals, the overall majority said that the goals were met. Student learning goals, the overall majority was that the goals were met. District improvement goals, it was that the goal, the overall, the overall assessment was that the goals were met. As we go through, step two, assess, assess his performance on standards. So step one is instructional leadership. Once again, the, the majority of the committee, it was on, it was a rating of proficient. For the benefit of the viewing public, there are four ratings. It is unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. And Bob, just from a context perspective, and keep me honest.
Yeah.
The, the two middle ratings of proficient and needs improvement are what is, is sort of what's been, sort of where the, as we, as this was rolled out, is sort of where the standard falls in as many of these go through. Proficient is sort of the target. Exemplary is, is something that is more of an aspirational piece. There are components that will be through, but as this was rolled out a couple of years ago, it was that, you know, if we went through and everything was exemplary, then it's, you know-
Right.
-we may be questioning the kids.
So that, that's correct. In fact, on the, on the grids that you have, it's graded out for that reason, that the sort of proficient is, as Jen knows, as Kevin and Kathy know, and for the teachers, that's, that's the target. It's actually bold-faced and everything. So that's really what you're aiming for. So proficient is, is where you want to be. There are areas, as that, you know, that are in here where there might be exemplary needs improvement and unsatisfactory, but proficient is the target. That's right.
Okay. Great. So just for the benefit-
And on the curve of needs improvement and-
Yep. So on the bell curve, needs improvement and proficient are sort of the highest, highest watermark.
That's honest.
And then unsatisfactory and exemplary are sort of the, the low percentage. So, standard one, instructional leadership, the group, the, the majority was proficient. Standard two, manager, management and operations, again, proficient. Standard three, family and community engagement, once again, proficient. Standard four, professional culture, once again, the, the majority was proficient. So as an overall for that, for step three, rating overall summative performance was a proficient rating. And again, that's in line with, with the majority of the committee. So, we'll pause here. If anybody has any comments from their individual assessment that they'd like to add in, now would be a good time. Patrick?
I'll start it, yes. So I did, I did give Bob one exemplary, and that's with his family and community engagement. And that's something I've given him an exemplary in every year since. And so my comment on that is Bob's community engagement has continued to be exemplary. I've gone in, I've gone on a great deal of detail in the past about his connection to the community that he serves, and I reference every comment that I've made in prior evaluations. They all still ring true today, and it's, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a pleasure to see the gusto with which you engage the community. It really is a very good thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Great.
If I could-
Mike, Mr. Chairman. Sure.
If I could go back to professional practices, I gave Bob exceeded.
Okay.
In my opinion, I've, I've been out many times in the evening at different events when Bob's representing the Milford Public Schools. He, he represents us and makes us very, very proud. I think he's a very professional guy in his appearance, in his actions, in his thoughts, going on to get his doctorate, you know, this year. So I, I said that in my opinion, his practice, professional practice goals were exceeded. Like Patrick, in management and operations, family and community engagement, professional culture, again, I gave him exemplatory. And the reason I did is, if you read the definition of why they want you to grade exemplatory, what stuck out to me, and I spoke to Bob about this earlier today, is that allows them to use it as a model of practice regionally and statewide. I'd be proud. I'd be proud for our district, under Bob's leadership, and Kathy and Dr. McIntyre as well. I would be very proud for us to be used, and that's why I graded those areas that way. I think his management skills are flawless. I'll never forget when he announced the new principal at the high school, and I called him up and I told him, I says, "No, Bob, I'm, I'm jealous." He said, "What are you jealous of?" I said, "Well, the purpose or the desire of any good manager is to surround yourself with a team of people that truly believe in your philosophy, and you've now done that." That's a true conversation that I had with him. So I think his management skills are, are, are great. They're flawless to me. Family and community engagement, I don't think you could ask for a superintendent more engaged in the community and, and families than, than Dr. Tremblay is. And professional culture, just to me, you just have to walk around and watch. And I think, I think, again, he makes us, he makes us very proud. I'm very proud to serve on the Milford School Committee, knowing that, that he serves as our superintendent, and we have an administration and teachers and staff like we do. So, thank you very much.
Any other members?
I want, I'll add on-
Sure.
-one of the areas that I focused on, and I'll just quote, it's from the, the Evaluation Rubric for Superintendents, that we expect a superintendent to demonstrate strong context and audience-specific interpersonal written and verbal communication skills, and is able to model this element. And I think in line with what some of my colleagues around the table have just stated, one of the strengths of our superintendent is not just being a good communicator, but being able to break things down. There isn't a single topic that I've heard addressed that I have said afterwards, "I don't really know what he's talking about." And we talk about so many complicated things in education, and so many acronyms, and you've spoken about them yourself, Mr. Chairperson, and every time something is talked about, whether it's the hospitality program, or the Chinese exchange program, or the way that we're rolling out a student support model called RTI, you understand every single time what he's talking about. And, you know, similarly, as skilled as he is at that, I had mentioned in here that you go to the Brookside School, and they have a cake raffle on a Saturday afternoon, and there's your superintendent running a cake raffle, just as easily as we will see him running an honors program at the high school. So, you know, I know in a lot of districts, we talk about the high school as a flagship, and me as an elementary person, sometimes you feel a little bit slighted in the elementary, because you're not, you're just not. It's not, you can't compare the two. But in this district, I feel like everything is given equal, equal weight. And I've worked for many superintendents with many different strengths, and this really is singular in terms of what I've seen from Dr. Tremblay, in terms of his support publicly for our schools.
All right. With that being said, we'll move on to the, the individual sections, and just the overall ratings within, and the ratings within those. So the first one is performance rating on standard one, which is the instructional leadership. Just going through, once again, the overall rating was a proficient. In each of the categories, and I'm just gonna read, I'm not gonna read the details on it, but I will go through the, the individual, the individual things. So first one is curriculum, next is instruction, following is assessment, evaluation, and then data-informed decision-making. In each of these sections, the majority, the majority of the committee responses were proficient, so the overall rating was a proficient rating as well. I know we sort of gave our overall comments. If there's any individual comments anybody would like to make on that particular section, I know we talked through it a little bit already, but any other individual comments?
I may, Mr. Chairman, after Patrick.
Yep. Patrick first, and then Mike.
I think that, my main comment here, and I'll summarize it, because it's a little bit, it's a little bit long. I'm, I'm a paragraph person, sorry.
You were one of my textbook guys.
Yeah. You know, I think that the DESE makes keeping up with all of the current standards very, very difficult, and I think frankly, a lot of the DESE standards are not very well thought out. And so I think that our team here, Bob, Kevin, I mean, our entire administrative team does a very good job of trying to juggle and maintain some sort of a, a sense of compliance with those guidelines, even though some of them, we all know, aren't things that are necessarily productive towards educating students. So, it's a difficult job, and I wouldn't want to have to juggle it, so.
Thanks. Mike?
It reminded me of a line from President Reagan, who once said, "I'm far from the brightest president, but I surround myself with the brightest."
That's true.
And I, I graded Bob, and I said, you know, because of Bob's short time in years in the classroom, he has to work very, very hard at curriculum and instruction, and I think he really truly does. But he, I personally believe he hit a home run when he hired Dr. McIntyre to kind of lead that, lead that ship. And it just shows that he has the ability to say to himself, "Well, it's an area that I need help in, and I'm gonna go get the person," whoever that person is, "that can get that job done and, and do it right." And I was thinking the same thing, is for Kathy, business management. I mean, I don't think we could find anybody as dedicated as, in this almost six years that I've been here, as you. And I, so again, Bob, I say, "You, you surround yourself with the best. You really truly do, and that's, that's how the job gets done." So, I congratulate you for, you know, some people will get angry when they get, you know, those kind of comments are made about them. You didn't get angry. You went out and got the job done. Good job.
Yeah, I, I would tell you, just, I'll add in my, my context here. This is the area in the three years that I've been doing this, that I've, I've certainly seen some of the most growth from you. You, you took on a big challenge about a year ago, a little over a year ago now, because Dr. McIntyre's been with us for a little while. We really took on the instructional leadership, and you've, you know, one of the things that we charged you with as a committee during that evaluation process- We really took on the instructional leadership and you've, you know, one of the things that we charged you with as a committee during that evaluation process was, one, you were taking on curriculum prior to Dr. McIntyre joining. Then you got to find somebody to come in and we added the role and Dr. McIntyre's come in. And you haven't taken your finger off the pulse. You've continued on with your growth and your development on that. And to Patrick's point as well, the DESE, sometimes it'll be, it's, it's not exactly the straightest road in the world to follow. And they tend to like to put a lot of speed bumps in there just for their own fun and amusement at times, it seems. But you've done a nice job of continuing to navigate through that, so cheers.
Thank you.
All right. With that being said, let's move on to the next one. Next one is management and operations. So the subcategories here are environment, human resource management and development, scheduling management, information systems, laws, ethics and policies, and the final is fiscal systems. Within each of these categories, again, the majority of the, the majority of the evaluations did come through with a proficient in each of these subcategories and with an overall rating of proficient. Any individual comments? Patrick?
So I did rate Bob as proficient in all of these categories. And it's, it's, Bob is a, I would believe Bob to be a natural leader. And it's obvious that he creates a good culture. He's very well regarded by his staff. One thing that I think that, that he could probably continue to work on and has been working on, and this is a comment that I had last year, is that I would like to see, sometimes I feel like the principals don't walk in lockstep with Bob's vision. And I feel like when they add their own flavor to what Bob, to what Bob envisions, sometimes we have applications of policies that aren't quite even across all of our school levels. Again, not that this takes away from his proficiency in this category, but I think it's something that, that merits a mention.
The only piece I'll add in this, and this was a comment that I had made during mine as well, which is, and it speaks a little bit of what Patrick was talking about, but I would say again, I, I did rate you proficient in each of these categories as well. You know, what I would say is, is I think overall you do very well in this. Again, I think your leadership skills are, are exceptional. And as, as we've talked about in the past as well, and it's something that, you know, is, I would, I would encourage you to continue to, continue to develop your skills on, which is, when you get somebody that is such a strong natural leader as you are, it's that balance between leading and managing. And the propensity to over-lead and under-manage at times, and keeping that very delicate balance is something that is going to, is a, is a constant work in progress for all leaders. I would encourage you to continue to manage that, continue to work on that balance between leading and managing. Again, doesn't impact the professional rating. I think you do, I think you do an exceptional job. But that, continue to work on that. That's a, that's a piece that's, will continue to come up at times throughout your leadership career. Joe?
I just wanted to add, so I rated Bob as proficient in each of these indicators as well. But I just wanted to touch on the first one, environment. And as you all well know, the safety and wellness of our students and staff has always been a priority for this committee and, and for Bob. And I just wanted to highlight, you know, some of the, some of the key accomplishments for him this year in, in that regard. You know, the training seminars for the secretaries of administrative assistance, the new RAVE Mobile Safety Initiative that he introduced into, into the district. And we continue to focus on educational programs and resources that address the, the social and emotional wellbeing of all our students. And some of those highlights were the Chris Heron presentation that was done late last year. And then the grant to fund the Milford Students Assessment and Intervention Program, which is aimed for kids in middle school and high school to help them with some of their behavioral and social needs as well. So, you know, it's, I know a priority for you and, and I know will continue to be a priority for, for all of us going forward.
All right. We'll move into the next section. So the next section is family and community engagement. So the, the subcategories for this are engagement, sharing responsibility, communication, and family concerns. In this category, the first three subcategories of engagement, sharing responsibility, and communication, the overall rating from the committee was, was proficient. In family concerns, it was, it, the rating was exemplary. Certainly something that, you know, should be, you know, very proud of, so. Any comments from the committee? Joe?
So this was an area that, that I felt was one of Bob's greatest strengths. And I rated him as exemplary for both engagement and sharing responsibility. I just felt that, you know, Bob's performance in this area is very strong. He does a great job communicating with families and other Milford departments and the community in general. Over the past year, he's spent a considerable amount of time in advocating for the, the new Woodland School project. And that really demonstrated some of those collaborative skills that, that he, he has. And then he's worked very closely with other town departments on several initiatives. I know he provided a lot of analysis during the whole casino debate. He's heavily involved with the Technology Task Force, and he's involved in a lot of local boards and organizations and leverages many of those relationships for the greater good of the, the Milford School District.
Mike, you're doing a bit.
Yeah. In this category, I, I rated Bob exemplary in every category. And the reason that I did, it was two reasons. Number one, again, I go back to the engagement that he has with families and with his staff, the events that I see him attending, you know, in the evenings, whether it's school-related or in the community, the chamber, whatever, you know, whatever it is. But also what played a big factor for me was, as, as everybody on the committee knows, I deal with the public and I meet a lot of people and I talk to a lot of people. When I talk to people in education, that are in education for a living, and they don't know that I'm on the school committee and they're voicing their opinion, I say, I just sit, you know, stand there quietly and listen and say, I'm so fortunate, or we're so fortunate to have a person like Dr. Tremblay in these particular areas. Because these are areas that they're talking about in that the person, whoever it is, just doesn't get seen in the community, doesn't attend, you know, handpicks the events they're going to attend. I think Bob attends almost every single event he can get his hands on, to the cake, another classic example. And I just, you know, you listen to these people and they're, not only are they frustrated, they struggle with it. They're looking for their leader and their leader isn't there. Not criticizing anybody, I'm just saying that in our end, we don't have that problem. We have a leader that's out there in the community every single day, representing the Milford Public Schools.
All right. We'll move on to the next category. The final category here is, is a professional culture. And the subcategories for this are commitment to high standards, culture, cultural proficiency, communication, continuous learning, shared vision, managing conflict. In this category, again, the, the committee's responses were proficient rating. Any members have any comments from their comments that they wrote down? Patrick?
So, last year, in the managing conflict category, I actually rated Bob as needs improvement. And this year, I ranked him as proficient. And I, I do want to comment that his, his awareness of, you know, potential, managing a school system, I imagine, is a very difficult thing. There are a lot of professionals, very highly educated, who have opinions and who are the leaders in their own classroom every single day. And there can be a lot, there can potentially be conflict that occur between staff members and, and among staff members. And that's a very difficult environment to, to have a handle on, on the conflict that occurs. And I think that you've done an excellent job this year, Bob, of just increasing, not that you were unaware before, but increasing the level of, of awareness and really working on the things that the committee asked you to work on. And so I, I've just seen an incredible amount of progress with that. And when we take something from a needs improvement category to a proficient category, I think it, it merits a mention in this, in this meeting.
I also wanted to comment. As someone who's been trained in this tool, checking the box exemplary feels like you're not supposed to do it. Because that's really, we have been trained, that proficient is the standard that we're striving for. And I did mark two categories in this standard as exemplary, and I felt that strongly about them, which is communication, as has been stated over and over tonight, and that shared vision. And that shared vision really talks about helping every student succeed, both where they are today and where we hope that they're going to go in the future. And when I hear principals and our assistant superintendent and Dr. Tremblay talk about the ways we're going to look at learning models and the way we're going to shift the things that we do, sometimes they didn't go as well as maybe we thought they were going to, but opening that back up for communication and for listening, looking at our high school kids and making sure that we have avenues for them to succeed, looking at our students with English language learning challenges and making sure that we have things translated for them. When I get the note from home from Woodland that comes in a variety of languages this year, or when we hear the superintendent's voice coming in a different language, that talks about that sensitivity to different kinds of learners in different family situations, that it's not always natural for every superintendent of schools, and it feels like it comes naturally for ours.
All right. So that, as they say, is, is the end of that particular evaluation. Bob, any, anything from, you're the receiver on this one, so what have you got?
I've been on the receiving end of all kinds of different reports in the, in the eight years in the committee. This is among the most humbling I've had. I'd like to thank the, the school committee for your continued support of me and encouragement and helping me to improve in areas where improvement's needed. There's always room for improvement. And this is, even though it's, it's a very positive report, there's still room for me, in my own reflections, to grow professionally. Now, some of what you see, and I've had the benefit now of being on two, I'm on two accreditation committees for NIESC. And Milford, of course, has participated in, over the years, in NIESC. Until you go out and visit a school, and I guess the only thing I really know is Milford. So for me, it's, it can always be better, it can always be better. Until you start visiting other schools and realize, wow, this is, this is really eye-opening. It's just how many things we have going well. And when we had the Secretary Matt Malone came to visit Milford High School, and we had a chance to, to brag, it could be better. And I'm proud of that in Milford. I'm proud that we have an attitude that is never good enough. It can always be better. And I'm proud to be in a district that values that. The, the reflection for me, and I, I, I can think of Milford, although I live in Menjin, I think of Milford as home. My family, my kids know their way around every school in this school district because we spend time here. And the events are like family events, and the staff to me is like a family, albeit sometimes with all the family dysfunction that you have in your family. And you manage that. And you, and it's the people. And there's not a day in the, in the seventeen years I've been in Milford now that I've not jumped out of bed to come to this job. And it's when I think very, I'm very proud of this community. I'm very proud to serve this community. It presents some tremendous challenges. Despite those challenges, we continue to be a level-two school district. We continue to have a vision for one-to-one technology, which we'll, we'll get to. We continue to have a high expectations for kids and what we want our children to do. And this school committee, and school committees before it, have held a high standard for its superintendent and for its administrators to be excellent. And, and that's the kind of district that I want to be in. And that's the kind of district that I want to stay in. Because that's the kind of leadership that I, that I believe in. So I'm not really sure what to say and how to reflect on all this, except that I want to say thank you, and it's a privilege to serve this town.
I, I sat down and I, I thought a lot, and I was around, Patrick was around, the year that we were pretty rough on you. And it came out in the media that we had, to give. And I started looking at the progression, or the progress that you had made over the years and, and really how far you had come. And you've just, you've made some fantastic improvements. And I just want to go on record as saying, in my opinion, this is an A-plus. Job well done.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And we are right on time.
Hey.
Actually, can I, can I?
Patrick's call. Done. Go ahead.
All right. You know me, I'm not going to give you an A-plus or anybody an A-plus. And let's face it, Bob, I mean, we've, we've had some fun and we've certainly agreed to disagree on lots of things. You know, lots of things this year too. But, you know, I tell everybody when, you know, and I, I tell everybody, you know, we're so lucky to have you because your job has to be one of the worst jobs I could ever imagine, right? It's not easy. It's extremely hard. And plus you have to deal with, you know, the likes of myself and some other folks, you know? But it's, it's, it's a tough challenge. And, and it's a political game too. And you do it extremely well. And, you know, I, I know there's been times that you've, you know, you and I have had conversations. And I try telling you all the time, Bob, I, you know, deep down, I think you do a great job. And I think this is a great opportunity for me publicly to say that to, to everybody in this town, that we are extremely lucky to have somebody with your talent and, you know, your ability to juggle everything that's involved in being the superintendent the way that you do. So, you know, good job. But again, you know, there's always areas that you can improve. And, you know, sometimes when I highlight things or bring things up, it's because I want you to do better. You know, I've said that before in previous meetings, and, and I mean that, so, you know, good job.
Thanks.
I just want to comment very briefly on the evaluation process because Mike and I have been doing this for a while. There've been committees that got along better and committees that got along less well over the time. But I think the course of this evaluation, when it comes time to evaluate, it's strange how the committee always seems to be on the same page. And, and I think that that's out of fairness and respect for the job that you do. And I think it's also out of the understanding that if we give you honest feedback, that you're going to make the improvements that we want you to make, and you're going to become, you know, the best superintendent you could possibly be. And so it's just been, this has been a very good process, I think, since so long as I've been involved in this committee. And, and I think.
Puppy dogs and ice cream cones in many communities. This community is not. This community expects accountability. And, you know, and I hold that in high regard, actually. It's funny, you mentioned about the, the leading versus managing and, and the, the vision and having sure that the principals, there's this buy-in. Tomorrow, we have a professional development day in Milford, as, as you know. And I'll be actually presenting the, the plan, the strategic plan. You know, believe me, a, a positive, a positive report card like this one does not mean that I now sit back and, and don't take those next steps to become, even challenge myself even more. It's, it's an innate for me to want to challenge myself. And please know that I will not sit back and relax on a good report. There's much more work to be done, and I'm up to the challenge.
Thank you.
It's been, you've had a good year, Bob. And I've, I've told you this, you and I have had private conversations about this. Anybody that wants to do their annual, I challenge anybody, we talk about, oh, well, it's the private sector versus the public sector. I challenge anybody that would be willing to have their annual review done on television by seven independently elected individuals. I still think you ought to have your head checked. However, I think you do a fantastic job. You really do, you're, you know, you work really hard at this job. You continue to develop. And again, you're absolutely correct. This committee expects more. And even in a good, even in a good review, and I will tell you, having gone through, and I got to read each of yours as they came in, and I printed them all out, and I'm sitting them, with them all on my desk, sitting at home, and I'm reading through them, and I'm like, did I print that one twice? No, no, it's two different ones. But we really, they're, they're just seeing that seven personalities and coming from very different backgrounds, very diverse work experiences, life experiences, and professional experiences.
Absolutely right. We do. So we'll take a, a motion for Patrick, a second from Jen. All in favor? And we will move forward. Thank you. Next, we have the appointment of the Milford Public Schools Wellness Committee Representative. So this is a position that really is going to be going forward and is going to be working sort of in tandem, as I, as I, as we've been talking about. This is something where we should have, Dawn had brought this up to us earlier in the year and brought this to our attention, where the school committee is supposed to have a representative that's appointed to this committee. We have not had one previously. So we do need to have somebody that is going to be appointed to that wellness committee. That being said, I, I did give some thought to this, and I've, I've not had an opportunity to reach out to the individual I think would be a good person to join in on this. I do think it's something that's going to run in tandem. We talked about joining with the Safety and Security Committee as well. That being said, in addition to your vice chair duties, Mike, would you be willing to take on that?
Sure, absolutely.
Excellent. So, Mike, I'll have you, we'll appoint you as our, as our wellness representative.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Moving forward. And I see it's PowerPoint time. So, but we're not there yet, so we got to go to Kathy first. He's getting all warmed up. I see the PowerPoints coming on the side of my eye.
Don't screw up with me. It's a good night.
He said eight minutes. He said eight minutes.
I, I did want to highlight that I'm five minutes ahead, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment?
You're going to mess up my five minutes.
No, no, no. I just wanted to point out, because, you know, in, in fairness to Dawn too, and Dawn, I just want to back to you earlier. Thank you. I thank you for the, the comments tonight. And, and Dawn, uh, brought up a very important point in terms of communication where that could be improved. And, uh, what you'll see in the Dropbox, and I, I bring it up just for reminder to everybody, that we've included in the Dropbox now all of these subcommittees, we know which we'll get to after, that as we have meeting agendas and meeting minutes, you know, the wellness and whatever we have. It was a point well taken, how we can better communicate those without sending you a thousand emails to read. So, uh, from time to time, check your, um, Dropbox and we'll include minutes in there from every subcommittee meeting, whether or not it's reported at school committee or it's another, it's another subcommittee in the school district. And you'll find all the information there from all the meeting agendas and meeting minutes. So if you want to go back and check on something or if you're hearing a concern from, uh, from a parent or constituent and you want to follow up on that, uh, let me know that and I'll point you to the right direction, but feel free, those will be on the Dropbox and updated periodically.
Bob, would you have Melissa, uh, at least for me, I don't want to speak for everybody, but could you have Melissa please email out my Dropbox login name and ID so I can access it from my personal devices?
Yes, um, so have her email it out to just give you the access information that you'll need?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if the rest of the committee members want it as well. I have, you know, I have Apple devices and I travel all the time, so if I could get them on any device, I'd like to do that, so.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I see what you mean. I think I understand. You know what I'll do, uh, at the closing, I'll give you the information, I think I have it right here with me, actually.
Thank you. Alright, so, um, Kathy, you're up first. So we've got the report of the Assistant Superintendent and business, uh, for Business and Human Resources.
I have for the committee's approval this evening, six warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of three hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Okay, take a motion from Joe, second from Dawn, all in favor? Okay, motion passes.
Sorry. Second warrant is in the amount of ninety-six thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents.
Take a motion from Mike, second from Jen, all in favor? All in favor, motion passes.
The third warrant is in the amount of two hundred forty-two thousand two hundred ten dollars and forty-four cents.
Take a motion from Patrick, second from Joey, all in favor? Motion passes.
The fourth warrant is in the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay, take a motion from Mike, second from Jen, all in favor? Motion passes.
The fifth warrant is in the amount of thirty-one thousand one hundred twenty dollars and three cents.
Okay, take a motion from Joe, second from Jen, all in favor? Motion passes.
And the last warrant is in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and eighteen cents.
Okay, take a motion from Dawn, second from Patrick, all in favor? Motion passes.
The committee also has a list of the latest, uh, appointments and hires from our previous meeting. No vote is required. We do have a, um, jury duty request for Eileen Turpin, which does require a school committee vote.
Okay, uh, any members have any questions?
Can we just make a vote to always approve?
Since it's against the law for a sponsor.
Seriously, can somebody talk to Jerry and, I know Mike loves it, but.
I was gonna let Mike make the motion.
I know it.
Uh, but, uh, yeah, I mean, actually, that may be something, especially since it's, it's actually would be against the law if we didn't do it.
Well, Jerry will be here later this evening.
We can ask him during executive session.
But either way, I'll.
Mike, would you like to make a motion? Mike takes a motion, Dawn takes a second.
Jury duty?
All in favor? Motion passes.
Uh, under personnel update, I'd like just to brief the committee, uh, quickly about the, uh, position for the athletic director. Where we stand currently. The posting has closed. We have received, um, a hundred applicants, uh, all over the country. The interest came from all over the country. Um, Nick Sakili, uh, and the other screening committee members have gone through them all, uh, which would be Nick Sakili, Rich Piergostavo, Tony Chinapi and, um, Fran Witten, who's a retired AD from the El Gonquin, uh, school department. They have brought that, um, hundred down to fifteen. Within that fifteen, Nick very nicely put together a rubric to rate each one of those fifteen candidates down to a, uh, a field of five, uh, which will be, which has already been forwarded to the three principals to begin the interview process and the hiring process. There were, um, other qualified, um, Milford candidates that Nick has moved forward, um, for John and Nancy and Carrie to consider as well outside of that fifteen rubric committee, um, recommendation. So, w- it looks like December first is going to, um, be a live date for us. I think things are moving very fast, um, depending on how the interviews move forward. I think we're in line for, um, having our recommendation. So just as a, a quick update on that.
Just a quick question on that, Kathy.
Oh, sure.
Is there, is there going to be a transition time? So if this person starts December first, I believe we have Nick as the interim until December first.
Until December first, so.
So my, my question is, is, is there the ability, and if it's something that we need to bring before the full committee, um, is there the ability to work through a transition time with Nick? Either for, you know, a thirty-day overlay to help bring this person up to speed, particularly if they are from outside the district, where it's, uh, it's, it's learning, s- everything from where's the office located to, um,
Absolutely.
Going through the schedules, understanding what, where everything is located and kind of getting that person as, as an onboarding process for that individual.
Well, our goal would absolutely be that this, uh, selected candidate would work with Nick. The, um, the real issue would be if this candidate is coming from another district, what kind of notice do they have to give, depending on who is chosen? So, um, our goal would be yes, but it will depend on, um, who's chosen. And, you know, maybe there's a little, uh, levity with the December first date with Nick and maybe he could commit to a few extra days. I'm sure he would do that, so, I, I think we'll be fine and I think whoever the committee or the, um, principals choose, Nick would work with that person, 'cause he wants them to be successful. So I don't think we need to be too concerned.
I have a clarifying question. You meant, there's a fifteen-point rubric that you said they're being assessed on to determine if.
There was a rubric for the fifteen that were scaled, fifteen candidates.
Fifteen candidates, okay. So they all met certain criteria that were on a rubric?
Correct.
And then there were some other candidates who you kind of said were in a different category because they were Milford residents?
Correct.
So at the end of the day, is it the assumption that whoever gets moved forward, no matter where they're from, is going to meet all the criteria on the rubric?
I think the Milford candidates, um, were being recommended for an interview. The five candidates that were part of the rubric process, um, those Milford candidates might not have had all of the skill set that met the high score of that rubric. And, um, Nick, being the athletic director, interim athletic director, recommended possibly that the Milford candidates at least receive that interview because they are Milford town residents. Now, that's.
At the end of the day, the assumption would be that whoever is hired would have the skill, the complete skill set, no matter where they reside.
That would be my expectation, is that they have to meet the, you know, if they didn't ma- if they didn't make the shortlist of whatever the, of the hundred, and I haven't seen the applicants or the rubric.
Right, right.
But my expectation would be that, yeah, that if there's a, if there's a threshold of credibility, then we should be true to that.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you.
And, um, I also have for the committee's approval this evening, professional development in the amount of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty cents, and that does require a vote.
Okay, take a motion from Patrick, second from Joe, all in favor? Motion passes.
And there, oh, and there are gifts, Mr. Chair.
We have two gifts, yes, I see that. Uh, so the first one is for, is, um, it is from the Blackstone Valley Ed Foundation. That's a gift, uh, the name of the gift is for the Hospitality and Tourism, um, Management Program. And it is in, wow, very generous, in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Ooh, that's great.
That's fantastic. Uh, the next one is, uh, the donor is the Brookside PT, uh, Brookside Elementary PTO. Um, it's just a gift and donation. It's, uh, for the purpose of us, of the spring gala and is the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars. So we have some very generous donations.
Very generous.
Uh, please make sure we send a thank you note for each of those. That'd be great, thank you. Um, so for those two gifts, we'll take them as, uh, one solid vote. Uh, take a motion to accept the gifts. Motion for Mike, second from Joey, all in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Every time we go through this, so Kathy, I love that how concise you are. That being said, I'm a little nauseous over the amount of money that we just spent. But, uh, I, it's necessary and, and goes to the right place and I know that we're watching every penny.
It's what then I thought went, exactly.
It is, it still doesn't change the mindset that that's still, there's full houses that we just paid for. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Uh, up next, we do have Dr. McIntyre, uh, so for the report of the sup- of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
I know Mike lost, couldn't sleep last night because he was so excited that he was coming today.
That's right.
So hopefully you'll be able to rest well tonight, Mike.
Lot of good information in here.
I, I want to give the committee a real high-level overview tonight and follow up with more detailed discussions at future meetings. So I just want to give you kind of the general trends and patterns we're seeing in the district so that, um, that you have an understanding of where we, we stood in terms of the two thousand fourteen MCAS performance. Um, we continue to be a level-two district, which, uh, the levels run from one through five. One being the top level, um, five being districts that are, that are struggling a little bit. Um, and we're, we're solidly a level-two, which kind of puts us, um, in the context of the, the, the evaluation, solidly in the proficient category. So, for the ELA MCAS for all students, um, both our CPI, which is our achievement, and growth exceeded the state. The growth made it, made a great jump from a fifty-five to a fifty-nine. So our students were growing at a, at a nine-point, um, higher rate than the state. The state average is fifty.
That's great.
And this is also the highest ever in Milford's history too, so I want to congratulate all the hard work of our teachers. Um, it, it tied a rate, I think, in two thousand eight. So it's tied our highest rate of growth ever, so that's, that's really fantastic news. Math, um, our overall achievement exceeded the state performance, but our growth dipped this past year. Um, this was, uh, one of the first times that the, um, questions were more aligned to the two thousand eleven state standards. And the state overall, if you look at the numbers, dropped from, um, eighty-point-eight to eighty-point-three. And if you look at, the t- the trend for the state tends to be moving up for achievement and this is the first year as a state, we dipped for achievement and some of that is, um, a reflection of the new, the new standards being assessed. Um, our students with disabilities in English Language Arts, um, our growth declined this year, but still exceeded the state's growth. And our achievement was slightly below that of the state overall.
Kevin, is that all students on an IEP? Is that what?
That's every student, um, three through ten, basically, who's tested, yeah.
That's on a, on an IEP?
Correct. So this is the full, this is the full district view. That's a good question.
Are there, Kevin, are there students that could be receiving, uh, services from the Special Education Department that aren't on an IEP that wouldn't show up on this?
No, every student that rece- is receiving an IEP service would be reflected in this report. So, so for math, um, we were below the state average for both achievement and growth this year. And that's something, um, that's something that we're really looking at, is, is how can we reverse this trend and move it in a more positive direction? And I've been having those conversations both with, um, principals and our curriculum team leaders.
But it's not really a significant departure from our trends.
No, 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 no. But it, it's, it's concerning in the sense that this is the first time we're being tested kind of under these new standards, which will be held accountable for the PARC tests as well. The questions that are being asked are gonna be even more complex than last year. And we really want to make sure that students are prepared going into the assessment to really show what they can do. For, um, our, our low-income students, uh, we exceeded the state, uh, performance in achievement. And we were significantly, significantly higher in growth, um, by ten points, actually. And again, for our, our, for the math performance of our students who fall in the low-income category, um, we exceeded the state in terms of achievement and had the exa- and had the exact same growth as the, as the state. So we were pretty similar to the, to the state averages in terms of mathematics. Where, where we saw a big jump was, um, our FLEPS students, which is our former Limited English Proficient students. So these are students that were ELL students that have exited from that program. And we're actually, um, fifteen points higher than the state. And this is, this is due in part to a restructuring to the ELL program in terms of exiting criteria. And we're finding that if we, um, maintain students in the program, um, until they meet certain kind of higher benchmarks, they tend to do better once they, once they leave and once they're kind of more mainstreamed into the regular, regular program. And you're gonna see.
I should interrupt you really quickly there and, and, is a point I meant to make earlier too, uh, uh, after the evaluation was, um, not only do we, do I surround myself with people who are smarter than I, but also the school committee has been outstanding in supporting what we believe to be the right vision for this district. And these results, these kinds of things you're hearing Kevin report on tonight, just prove that out, that, you know, Jen Lancaster should be credited for the work that she's done.
And she's done a fantastic job.
She really has. And, and the forward vision she has for how these students can make that kind of growth. So, uh, I meant to thank the committee also, uh, just for the support in every budgets we've passed and the, the kind of scrutiny we've presented, uh, new positions, Kevin being among them, and the work we've done to adding positions where we think that need is in place. And I hope you're seeing the, the fruit of that, of that effort here. So I don't mean to, well, you're on the clock, so you only have two minutes.
That takes, the nine minutes is out the window now.
That's over, no, so.
We're at nine minutes now.
Sorry, yeah.
That's right. Um, for the ELL, the ELA MCAS for our English Language Learners, those numbers are, um, slightly below the state average in achievement and, and, and eleven points lower in growth. And some of that is, is the swap in the structuring of the program. So we saw a big growth with the FLEPS. We saw a little bit of a dip with the ELL population. We expected that just based on some of the restructuring that we did. So I just want to highlight some successes that we've had. Um, again, overall, the student growth percentage for the district in ELA is fifty-nine, which is, um, nine points higher than the state average. The student growth percentage at grade six was sixty-seven point five and grade seven was sixty-four for mathematics, which are phenomenal numbers. That puts those, those groups in that high impact on student learning, which is, which is fantastic. These are, these are median numbers, not averages, so it just tells you that the learning that's happening at those grade levels is amazing. Um, for English Language Arts, um, at grade six was seventy-three and grade seven was sixty-eight, which is also, they're just fantastic numbers. The Woodland, um, ELA student growth percentile increased by seven points, which is a, which is an amazing jump. And the, um, the high school ELA exceeded the state average in every area on the two thousand fourteen MCAS. And I'm gonna talk about that in a second and kind of how that happened. And then SGP for FLEPS students, again, increased twenty-five percent, which is, which again is a huge jump. Last, last summer, Carrie Bonak, the, uh, high school principal, worked with their faculty and they worked together on setting a goal for doing writing across the curriculum. And each department and each class set a writing goal. So whether it was physical education, whether it was music, English, math, science, every class set a writing goal, every single class. And in two thousand thirteen, you can see their MCAS scores, and it's hard to see on this, but some of them are red, which means they're below the state average. Some of them were black, which means they're above the state average, so it was a little mixed. And after just one year of having this writing goal in place, every single standard was above the state average. Which really speaks to, number one, just the talent of the educators we have, um, across the district, in this case, the high school specifically. But the power of what happens when you set a goal, you target it, and you see great improvement. And it's just a fantastic accomplishment. And, and it's rare when you see something like this happen in the first year. 'Cause Carrie and I had several conversations over the course of the year and she said, what if this doesn't work? And I said, well, it might take a couple of years to actually really get results, 'cause it's gonna take time for peo- and they're, and they're all using a, a modified version of the PARC rubric. So they're, they're ahead of the game in that, in that department too. But immediately we saw great results and, and this year, they're kind of refining that goal to try to get the writing even better across, you know, nine through twelve. So I just wanted to highlight that, 'cause that was like a whole school initiative, where you really saw something pay off from start to finish. And I want to give the folks at the high school a lot of credit for that, 'cause they did a really nice job. So, some challenges that, that we're seeing is, um, our overall maths growth percentile dipped four points overall. And we're, we're examining that again. We tend to be above the state average, um, hovering around fifty. We, we dipped below fifty for the first time in four or five years and we really want to look at that. I think some of that is attributable, again, to the question focus on the two thousand eleven standards and, and some alignment issues, but we're really looking at that and we're examining that, because we want the students to be successful and we want them to be prepared. Again, our overall mathematics achievement decreased one point five points as a district. We continue to need to close achievement gaps for students with disabilities, our English Language Learners and our low-income students in both, um, Language Arts and Mathematics. We have a new test in place for grades three through eight that we're gonna be putting into place this year. We're spending a fair amount of time in professional development, just tomorrow, kind of talking about what that's gonna look like, what it's gonna mean, how it's gonna roll out this year. And again, field testing from across, um, the state with the PARC last year showed that there was a disconnect, um, between kind of the, the two thousand eleven standards and what's happening in classrooms across Massachusetts. The two thousand eleven standards and what's happening in classrooms across Massachusetts, which is part of the reason why we saw a dip in achievement overall across the state as well. Which doesn't happen, usually they, they kinda trend upward a little bit, especially when you're looking at the aggregate. Literacy across the curriculum continues to be a priority. We continue to try to increase rigor in tasks, text complexity and the level of questions that are being asked in the classroom. And, and we're kinda working on that as a daily basis and trying to integrate that into what, in, into the curriculum we're already using. And that's, that's, that's kind of the, the, this is the general presentation of the overall results.
Thank you Kevin, I, I know you men- I know you've mentioned that uh you're gonna kinda go into depth and kinda have a lot of discussion about.
A- a- absolutely, but I just wanted, I just wanted to put, put it out, just the general scores for everybody and then we can kinda discuss it as the year goes on.
Right, thank you.
Excellent, well done Kevin.
Did you have a question, Joe?
Uh the only thing I was gonna make was, you know, when you look at these stats, y- you know, it's not like there's a huge spike up or down. Or there are, there's a couple of places you gotta really dig. And it's not just us, it's the entire state, right?
Right.
So I think it's important for everybody to realize how hard it is to actually make, you know, significant, significant gains in, in any of these areas. Now, I, I remember, you know, over the last few years of being on the school committee, you know, the, the one thing that I've realized is, our teachers do a great job, our students do a great job. But there are some areas that you highlight, right? Now, I, I don't see how you're gonna impact, you know, students with disabilities or. But the ELL programs, and that's where I think we've made our greatest strides, especially if you look at two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fourteen. I mean, two thousand and twelve proficient was eleven percent and the state was twenty-three, and now we've closed that gap to seventeen to twenty-three, which to me is our, our best area of improvement. I know uh from talking, um you know, to, to some of the teachers here, you know, there's things that we've put in place, like the summer reading programs and stuff like that. That again, uh you know, really help us uh in, in our district have a major impact on, on these stats. What I'd like to understand, i- you know, maybe for a future meeting is, you know, are there some schools that are really exceeding in the ELL space? That are doing things that we're not? And, and what are those things? Because, you know, if the state's averaging twenty-three and we're only at seventeen in proficient, there's gotta be some schools out there that are knocking it out of the park. And uh so just, you know, trying to come up with some, some other ideas, cause I think that's the number one area for us to have a, an impact on the overall numbers.
Yep.
Probably the easiest one. And I also know that there's a, there's a great uh impact to the taxpayer, you know, to get ELL students into the regular classroom faster. And over the last few years, especially for the newcomers, you know, we've seen charts, historical data, you know, on, on average, it takes seven years. I remember saying when the reading program came into place, it would be nice to see if that has an impact in getting them uh into the regular classrooms faster and. So, so I, I, I'm really happy with these numbers. I, I think it's, you know, um we're, we're doing a good, good job. Uh but if there are uh schools that we could reach out to that are really kicking it, you know, in, in this area, then we could.
Yeah, yeah, and I can, I can tell you just quickly, Jen Lancaster's on several state level committees, where they're looking at that very thing, like what models are leading to the best results.
Yeah. Right. Right, yeah, and if there's something that you need the support of the school committee to implement those things, you know, certainly love to hear them.
Great, appreciate that.
Okay, excellent, okay. All right, thank you Dr. McIntyre.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right.
I'm sure we can. We will move on to the next uh, next agenda item, which is just our subcommittee updates. So we'll start with the athletic subcommittee, so Joey and Dawn, have you guys had a chance to meet?
No, we didn't meet.
Okay.
Since the last meeting.
Okay, um safety and security, have you guys met since the last meeting?
Next meeting's December fifteenth.
Okay, um policy subcommittee, have you guys met since the last meeting?
Next meeting's October twenty-third.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh the next one is Woodland School Building Project.
Very, very brief update. Um so we haven't, we haven't met as a full committee yet this month. But the working group, which is a sort of a subgroup of the entire committee, continues to meet on a weekly basis. Um there were, there are a couple of, um there are a couple of hurdles that are coming up in the very near future. So uh back in September, we submitted um what they call sixty percent documents, meaning the, the building is sixty percent complete. And we submit it to the um, the school building authority and they come back with questions. An example of a question would be, the last time when the architect submitted the, the plans, there were fifteen different paint colors. And the, that, the MSBA looked at and said, does the school building committee know that you're planning to use fifteen paint colors? And the architect said, no, 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 we're not gonna do that, this is the palette that we wanna pull from. So these are the types of in-depth questions that they're asking to make sure that we stay on budget. So uh our next hurdle is going to be the ninety percent complete documents, which we're going to submit on uh October sixteenth. And so that will prompt another review by the school building committee. They'll have more questions for us, I'm sure. Um but right now, we are, we're moving forward, we are on budget, we are on time and we're very excited.
Thank you. All right, um and then we have wellness.
We have our first meeting October fifteenth.
Okay, um there is one that is not on here and it's just the middle school reuse.
Oh yeah.
Um and I just wanna kinda go over that for the benefit of the committee. So we have had one meeting, it was simply an organizational meeting. Uh we just sort of laid out what we were going to uh discuss. Bob was in attendance at that meeting as well as myself. Um we really, it was an organizational meeting. Part of what we talked about and was discussed at the meeting was really getting an understanding of what we have from a building. Um the need for really, and and you've seen probably through some media outlets as well as um an upcoming for the town meeting warrant. Um uh an ask for an appropriation of forty thousand dollars and that's to hire a consultant fir- a consulting firm to come in. That's gonna do an engineering um assessment of the building. Part of that engineering assessment is to get an understanding of what are the, what, what could potentially the building be used for? So part of what was talked about was, as we've talked about as a committee and has been talked about at length, which is. Could it be used for, if we wanted to go, if we decide we wanna go down the route and recommend, recommendation, pushing of um senior housing? If we wanted to keep it for administrative use and we wanted to turn it into offices, well, these are classrooms. They've got twelve foot ceilings and they've got their rooms this roughly the size of this room. Um as I jokingly said to Bob, as nice as it would be to have this one room be just one, just his office, uh seems a little roomy for one person. If we wanted to subdivide that, well, there's H B A C impacts with that. There may only be one, one duct that comes into the room, well, what does that look like? What does it take from a compliance perspective for Americans with Disabilities Act and meeting all these programs? So what ultimately came up was Rick Valani, town administrator, had gone through, you know, actually had already done the due diligence to uncover what the cost would be for a firm to come in. That will look at what's the building structure look like. And the pieces that we gotta keep in mind is, we talked about it being potential mixed use, what's the gym use look like, what's the, you know, what's the capabilities for the building? And keeping in mind, you know, part of the conversation, you know, that's been talked about around town is, oh, well, mixed use, well, what if it went into, you know, office space? Okay, so what does parking look like? Okay, parking, we know is a challenge. It's se- it's almost a seventy-one thousand square foot building. That is a huge amount of space. It's not very big from a school perspective. That being said, when you're talking about commercial use, seventy-one thousand square feet of bi- of business use is a gigantic building to have nobody work there. Cause they don't have any place to put a car. So all of these pieces are, in the context of the conversation. Um our next meeting is actually on October fifteenth, so next week, and it's actually a planned visit and walkthrough of the building of the committee. Uh for, you know, Bob and I are looking at it going, yeah, we're, Bob's in the building all the time, I'm in it at least a couple of times a year. But there are members of the committee that haven't been in there since they were students. Um and some of them are graduated many, many, many years before I did, so it's been a while. So they wanna come back through and just see what we're talking about from a building perspective, what does the parking really look like, so. That's our next planned meeting, we'll give updates as things go forward.
And I'll add that as a feature item too as well, something I'd missed.
Great, thank you. Okay. All right, uh next up is, we do have the school committee liaison reports, so this is where each member was given a school. Um any updates from any of the members based on any conversations or anything they've had from the schools? I, I just have one and it's uh with Stacy Middle School, they did have their back to school night, open house. Uh went off flawlessly, they did a phenomenal job. In fact, I think it was probably one of the best organized um that I've seen to date. Um and I've been to a number of them, so um you know, kudos to the teachers, it was great to see their engagement and their enthusiasm. And uh you know, really just what a, what a phenomenal year they have had of them there, so kudos to Nancy and the team there and all the teachers who just did a great job.
And I've been seeing some emails, it looks like everybody's getting correspondence, newsletters and things, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good.
All right, we'll move on. So next item, you'll notice that we did have an a- a- an agenda item change, it went from new business to future agenda items. Um this is just the, uh just mixing things up a little bit, so future agenda items, I think that are kind of depicts based on some conversations we had as part of our last educational. Uh component that we had with our governance board um at a meeting earlier in the mo- uh early in September, so. Uh we did change this to future agenda items. Do any um, uh any members have any items for future agenda? I know that I do have one, just as it pertains as to follow up to the end of cycle. Um but I'll add that and defer to the committee first, if there's any future agenda items people would like to see. Okay, um so my, the future agenda item that I would like to, that uh we would move forward as kind of a next step for the end of cycle evaluation for the superintendent. Would be to just, as we do on an annual basis, just to review his contract. Um and um and uh discuss salary evaluation. Um so for a future agenda item, that would be, uh that is something that would be done as is typical and common um during an executive session. So it'd be an executive session item for a, for a future meeting. Um we wanna do, it's, and I'll turn to the pleasure of the committee for the next, for the next meeting in October, the second meeting in October.
Yeah, after, after Bob's goals presentation is an appropriate time to do that.
Yeah, you're gonna do goals next meeting, right?
Next meeting, yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that as a, we will have an executive session next meeting, okay? Um any other members, uh so next item would be any old business, have any members have any old business? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Um next item up is adjournment, we do have an executive session this e- uh this evening. Um for the purposes of hearing a step three grievance through the MTA and contract discussion, um we will not be returning. So uh if I can have a motion from Joey, second from Jen, for adjournment, all in favor. Meeting is adjourned, have a good night, good evening everyone.